Okay, good evening to the August 11th, 2021, Orange Board of Selectmen's meeting. For those in the audience and those at the table who aren't aware of the emergency exits, they would be to my right, the audience left is the rear stairway that leads to the parking lot behind the town hall. Or you can go straight down the hallway out the back, which will lead you out to the firehouse, or you can go up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors and out the front door, and that will put you out in front of the town hall. Very good. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Somehow I got the chair with a hole in it again. I swear they put it here on purpose.
It's a lucky chair.
Yeah. Okay, we'll start on my right tonight, all the way down the end with Ms. Margaret.
Good evening, Margaret Nowicki.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
Good evening, John Corangelo.
Mr. Moreno, Town Attorney.
Good evening, Ralph Holkenquist.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Very good. All right, is there a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
This is to consider an act on the request to approve Gary Augustine LMT, Licensed Massage Therapist, I'm gonna say, okay, as a massage establishment. Gary Augustine is in the audience. Would you like to, you have to come up to the podium here and tell us what you would like to do?
My name is Gary Augustine. I've been a Licensed Massage Therapist here in Connecticut since 2008. I am a graduate of the Connecticut Center of Massage Therapy in Westport, and I would like to open a massage office here in the town of Orange at 35 Old Tavern Road. I would like to do massage to help people reduce stress, reduce anxiety, lower blood pressure, reduce their pain, increase range of motion. Massage has so many benefits, and it's always been a goal of mine since I had my license to have my own office. So, and that's what I'm here for tonight.
Okay, question, is that in 35, is that firelight?
Yes.
Across from the post office?
It is, yes.
The office building there, okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Augustine? Any other concerns?
I think so.
Yes, Ralph?
I have one question, and I'm not sure if I'm thinking is right, so I'm gonna ask you.
You need your microphone on.
Ralph, Ralph, your mic.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put this down so I can talk. It says here you're an independent contractor.
Yes.
As I read through the status of the independent contractor, and then the services provided by both contractor and this clinic, do each of the, does the clinic and you have separate clients?
Yes, we have separate clients.
Because I was looking on here, and one of the items in the status of independent contractor, the item C, says that all client records shall remain the property of the clinic.
Okay.
So that means if you leave the facility, they hold all the records to those patients?
Yes, they will.
Or clients?
They will have a copy of.
They have them all the time?
Yes, they will always have a copy of the records.
So you would leave, if you went someplace else, you'd have to start up a whole new clientele?
No, just my paperwork for the clients would remain on file with the acupunctureist.
Okay. There's a reading that, that they will, if you, somebody terminates the agreement, you have a one-year lapse before you can take, take any of the clients, or any of their clients. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I'm not looking to take any clients of the acupunctureist.
Okay.
But the clients that I obtain are mine to take with me should I leave. I did discuss that one point with, with Richard from LCH.
And you're, you also pay your own income taxes and all the taxes?
Yes.
Okay. I saw that you do have liability, you have liability coverage?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Professional liability.
All right. Okay.
All right, is that all there is? Anybody in the audience would like to ask Mr. Augustine anything? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and convene the regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to be made of approval or disapproval for Mr. Augustine's request for, as a Licensed Massage Therapist?
Certainly, I'll make a motion to approve the petition as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Oh, we're out of the thing, can't, so anyhow, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Staying unanimous, you're all set.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Great service.
Okay. (laughter) Play across a bunch of those bumpy chairs, I don't know.
Take a motion for a three-minute recess?
Are you by, you're by appointment only, I presume? People will contact you for that, okay. Well done. Public participation, public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow up to two minutes per speaker for that. Topic, is there anybody in? Yes. Yeah, you have to come up here. Yeah. And you can take your Mac, if it's easier to...
Yeah, would be much easier, thank you. My name is DeeDee Leboff. I live in Orange on 660 Broadview Road. I spoke at the last selectman meeting. At that time, I had not walked the Fred Wolf Park in its entirety, but I had attended the playground meeting on July 14th and listened to its members speak. I was troubled that Park and Rec was not a part of the playground decisions. Prior to what would have been Park and Rec's July meeting, my husband and I walked the Fred Wolf Park in its entirety. The land allocated for the playground is dangerously situated. The road entering at Hollow Road abuts the proposed playground, and it continues to the right, abutting the side of the playground directly across the road from a small and uneven proposed soccer field. Kids impulsively running across the road from the field to the playground and vice versa is only one reason for not locating the playground and soccer field there. It would be better suited to just have parking for everyone utilizing that side of Fred Wolf. We looked into and walked the extension of the park, which includes some 12 to 15 acres of flatland easily entered from Peck Lane and Hemlock Drive. Here, parking, soccer fields, and a larger and safer playground would be easily accommodated. We looked into the new business of the selectmen's April 14th meeting. Number seven considers a renewal of the license agreement for the rental of a farm field near Meeting House Lane at Fred Wolf Park. I reiterate, at Fred Wolf Park. Is it not time to utilize the land for all the soccer and playground children of Orange instead of farming corn there? Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
I know we're on the agenda. Tom Pizano, 523 Fairway Road, Orange. There was some concern at the playground meeting that was referenced about traffic and concern, and there's still a dilemma for them. With the opening and with the new revelation that we can come in through the little peck road, little peck by Hemlock, that would more likely be a good place to accommodate. One of the master plans showed that as an option. So, just, it's worth talking, we'll talk about it at another meeting, but I just thought I'd bring it up as a, as an option, a positive option, and, and a lot of people would buy into that, the neighbors, a ton of people, grandparents of kids that played soccer, lacrosse, baseball for 35 years, we would reach out. So, just a suggestion, and it would alleviate some of their frustrations and ours about the traffic problem.
Is there anybody else for public participation? Yes, Judy?
I would just like to remind people that there are fantastic farm markets all throughout the town of Orange, and the corn is in, and it's good, and I just would really encourage people to go around and sample some of the produce that is actually produced in Orange, and enjoy the, the harvest as far as I'm concerned. It's just really, everything is very tasty this year, including from my garden.
Is there anybody else? Okay, I have just a couple. Last a couple really stalwarts of the community that had done a lot for the community, Rudy Miller for one. He was a founding member, I think. He goes back 40 years with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and he was really a terrific guy, and pretty much to the end, he didn't miss much. He was really quite an asset to the community in many, many ways. He helped a lot of other areas too, but 40 years on the Zoning Board of Appeals as a founding member of that is something certainly to be recognized. And Chris Cozepowell, for any of you who knew Chris, grew up here in town, was a wonderful, wonderful contributor to our system. She was on the school board, she was a, that's one of those super helpful parents. She would tell you if there was something that was not right. She was never bashful about letting you know, but she was one of the most loving, caring people that I know, and her boys both did her very proud with their eulogies at her funeral, and she battled some illness for quite a long time, but she was just a terrific lady, and both of them are sad losses to the community. The Orange Rotary Club Lobster Fest is this Saturday, August 14th. Dine in or take out. Purchase tickets on the Rotary website, rotarycluboforange.org. I believe you have to purchase in advance this year for the Rotary Club's lobster dinner, whether you're gonna eat it there or you're going to take it out. It's rotarycluboforange.org, and you go on there and you'll find the appropriate links, and the Rotary Club does a lot of good humanitarian efforts for the town of Orange and the region. Quite honestly, they go beyond just the town of Orange, they're a wonderful, hardworking group over there. The Labor Day Concert and Fireworks is Sunday, September 5th, with a rain date of the 6th at the Orange Fairgrounds. It's the Ron Stat Review is the concert. The Orange Country Fair is the 18th and 19th of September. After it took a year off last year, it will be back, at this moment it's gonna be back. Everything is subject to possible changes, but we gotta wait and see what, as things progress. As of last week, just so all of you know, we had 25 positive cases in town, and out of the 25 cases, 20 of those were non-vaccinated people. So, it's kind of in the proof there that, you know, a large percentage, one of my relatives, a 97-year-old relative who hadn't left her house in like 15 months, ended up, she went to a wedding for a grandnephew and ended up catching it, but she was, she's probably one of the toughest ones in my father's side of the family, and she has made it through it very well, but at 97, and she hadn't left the house, went to a wedding, got it. Yeah, you figure by then it was, had settled down. So we even had it again right within our own family. Yeah, it's difficult, difficult situation, but, you know, we're all watching, and you're still just, the biggest parts of it are hygiene. I mean, when we were brought up, you were taught to wash your hands and don't get in somebody's face, you stay at distance and all, and, I mean, these are things that help besides the vaccine. I mean, the vaccines are good, but they're not proven to be 100%. So, let's all be cautious with that with the events coming up, and let's keep that in mind, please. Mitch, I asked you if you had announcements.
Public participation.
Oh, I love one.
Sorry. Anyway, October 9th, once again, speaking of the Rotary Club, the Rotary Club is our major sponsor of the Shredding Day, October 9th from 9:00 to noon at High Plains Community Center. We'll have the shredding day as well as the mattress collection there, and I believe we're gonna have the fair people also collecting the goods, food, food and goods there.
Food, another food drive.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Dean sitting there makes me think of it. He sent out a press release with some questions regarding Racebrook Country Club. I told you last month that we're still waiting on Racebrook, and we've had three or four gyrations of the lease and two of the purchase and sale agreement. There has been no sale, there is no lease at this time, it's in their court, and we sit and we wait. Yeah, so, that's where it is. They, they passed it to their next board up that they had to pass it to, and they had some other ideas of their own, and, so we haven't heard from them in three weeks anyhow, I think, probably it was before you were away.
Yes.
So about three weeks or more.
Their attorney was on, is, was on vacation last week.
So, that's where it is.
Ask a question, just because people are asking.
Up here. Sorry, but they can't pick you up back there.
Just because people are asking around town, is Racebrook making the payments? Or we've bonded for that 8.5 million, so are they technically not?
Are they still paying their mortgage?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yeah, they're paying their mort-
I think his question is related to the bond, not to their, so the town's bond.
Oh, that doesn't come due yet.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't come due until next year.
That's part of the lease, right? So, what does that 8.5 cover in terms of their mortgage?
The 8.5 will cover the debt they owe to Ion Bank and Newtown Savings Bank. It will cover the, there's gonna be capital gains because they're one of the 501s of one title or another. So there's an IRS part due, and there was a third minor payment, I forget what it is off the top of my head, but that 8.5 covers that debt. There's not much, much of any, actually, I don't think now there's gonna be any extra in there by the time they get around to pulling the trigger on this.
Right.
And the lapse they had, the year first payment wasn't supposed to be coming due. They were gonna have a year to build up their funds before they were making their first payment to us in May, May 15th of this coming. Well, it's coming at them quicker, they're less, far less than a year now. So, and they know that. You know, their payment is still gonna be due this coming May 15th.
Right.
So...
And I don't stand-
If it goes through.
Right, and I don't stand before you politically. I do, I do mean that, but I do think that residents are curious as to, you know, they don't need to know the details of the lease, but to know, here's where we're at, I think would be important. That's just what I'm hearing around town, so that's, that's why I brought it up.
It's coming out in response to your...
Yes. Pam has gone, Pam has gone back and forth. Appreciate that.
Yeah, so that's, that's where it is. Mitchell?
Follow one of Connor's questions, though. We bonded for 8.5 million, have we-
8.6.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction, 8.6. Have we released that money to Racebrook at this point without a lease?
Oh, no.
Okay, I wanna make sure that's clear. I don't, that was, that wasn't necessarily clear, that's what I thought. We're not releasing, they're not paying us, but we're not releasing the money to them unless we have that lease signed.
Correct.
Okay.
They weren't due to pay us until this coming May.
That part I understand, but we're not, but, what about our part to them?
The money is sitting in a town bank account-
Yep.
-at this time, because it was bonded and all, they were-
Right.
Originally, if you recall, this was anticipated to close by mid-June.
Right, for July 1st, yeah, that was the understanding.
So the money is sitting there, we went through the bond review and all of that, and the money's sitting there.
Immediately following the referendum, we obtained our title searches.
Yep.
We obtained an environmental report. That wasn't immediate, it took about a month or two because of COVID to-
Microphone.
Thought it was my mask.
Thank you.
Now he's breaking things.
Don't worry, I will. So, immediately after the referendum, we advanced the title searches.
Yep.
You've gotta remember, this is not one parcel that we're purchasing, it's four separate parcels.
Five, I think.
So it was four, it was four title searches plus environmental. That took an extended period of time because of the pandemic of getting the title searches back. The first drafts were sent to Racebrook in May, and we've been going back and forth, we're been arguing a little bit over the form of the ground lease. We believe it's supposed to be a certain way, they were pushing back a different way, and they're coming around to our understanding and position.
As they burn more money up.
But, you know, that's kind of, what we're doing is we're advancing the will of the referendum in a way that protects the town's interests. And we're not gonna rush to close, because at this point, you know, the, the primary goal was to maintain a status quo of what that land is used for, and that's exactly what is happening, right? And we will close it, hopefully-
By the end of the year.
In this fiscal, in this calendar year, but definitely in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
All right?
Okay.
The best as we can say.
Thank, thank you both for that update.
That's where it is.
That's, that's helpful, and I think it's also somewhat reassuring that the town has not expended the money-
No.
-without the lease, thank you.
No. The problem would be, is if they decide they don't like the terms ultimately, and they decide to go to somebody else. If somebody else comes up that wants to pay them, you know, significantly more money, you could go to them. So the problem would, interestingly, be then, this money was bonded and borrowed specific, so that money would have to be returned. So then, that would be very interesting for the purchasers of those bonds.
Enter a bond council.
Yeah, so there's, there's many, many webs to this one, yeah. So anyhow, that's where it is. Okay, any other announcements? No? Okay. Minutes, to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of July 14th, 2021. Were there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If so, state page in paragraph; if not, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, page 3, paragraph 2 at the bottom, the sentence that begins the Orange Health Department, oh, sorry, the, the last sentence of that paragraph-
Okay.
-where, that says CERT was recognized by the Orange Rotary.
Okay.
Dr. Mohammed, OVNA, and CERT were recognized by the Orange Rotary.
Okay, correction noted. Any others with that correction? Mitchell?
Not a correction necessarily, but I'm asking you and Ann, we did vote on the, the raises, there were a couple of corrections that had to be made. Can we get at some point a copy of the corrective?
Yeah, John has, yeah.
John has it? Okay, that's all.
He can send, she'll send it out electronically.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'll second, is that a motion?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as, as corrected.
Corrected.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? John abstains, he was not here. Okay. Item under new business, to consider an act on request from Simple Recycling to end the three-year contract and to resume an agreement, and for the town to resume an agreement with Goodwill as a recycle vendor at the transfer station. Simple Recycling didn't work out at the transfer station, not really by their fault, partly by the fault of what was being contributed to them. A lot of it was stuff that was really, should have gone into the hopper or out back into the metal or wherever. So Mitchell ended up having to deal with that, man, do you remember Sonny Wilkins who came to our meeting? And then he had to deal with Richard Borer from Goodwill, and, good for you, Mitch, that had a stink.
It was not, it was, it was not easy. We had, just to give you, Jim, Jim has encapsulated it, give a little bit more detail. Simple Recycling was very frustrated with the town, the town was frustrated with Simple Recycling, and there's two different things going on, three different things going on here. One was COVID, which kind of put a monkey wrench in everything as far as getting pickups and things like that. But, the town was providing a lot of things to Simple Recycling that they would not want, but they picked up everything, weighed it, paid us, and then when they got back to their place, realized that a lot of it was just pure junk. I heard stories of broken dishes, of broken weed whackers, of, of broken televisions, but they would pick it up because their driver, you know, was picking up what he could. We also had an issue with the fact that they, they couldn't keep up with the, the amount that was coming through, which is great on our residents' part, but they had trouble with their own people. And then basically, because of the first thing I told you, and also not being able to get enough drivers and their own problems, they were, they were losing money in this field because they also saw a much less of a percentage of clothes, the textiles, that is quote-unquote their bread and butter. So, I've been back and forth with Sonny over the last several months, and finally, about a month ago, a little less than a month ago, he said, listen, we just can't make this work anymore. I said, give me some time, because I first had to come to the Board of Selectmen, and also had to work out with Goodwill for Goodwill to come back. And so, the first thing I have for you, and I'll pass this along, is a letter that came today, finally, from Simple Recycling, basically asking to get out of the agreement. However, what is working much better than the transfer station is the small drop box at High Plains. So they are willing to continue collecting clothes and shoes at High Plains, and will continue to pick that up, that is not as big a problem, and will continue to pay us. I will say that the real good, the good news is that over, over just under 10 months, the town did make $6,000 in how much stuff was brought to the transfer station and the High Plains drop box, and taken, weighed, and paid for. With that, Goodwill has been in contact with both myself and the, and the people at the transfer station, they came out last week. What they would like to do is come back to Orange, like they said they would, but they went to things a little bit differently. They would like to put their new box, and I have information from Goodwill with pictures as well, pass that along, that they've agreed to come back to the transfer station, but it's been, it's gonna be a smaller trailer, if you will, that'll be at the top of the hill, instead of the current location. Simple Recycling bought that trailer from Goodwill, they are gonna remove it shortly, and even though they asked for 30 days, they'd like to get out sooner. As soon as Goodwill puts their box at the top of the hill, then Simple will pull theirs out.
Same one.
And, is there enough?
Yep.
And, they will collect things there. They're also talking about having a Goodwill attendant there at certain times, probably mostly on the weekend, Saturday, obviously, to help guide people into what they will take, won't take, et cetera, and make sure people are, you know, educated as to what can go into the Goodwill box and what can't. So, there's gonna be some changes. You know, the only bad thing really is that we're gonna cease to receive revenue, the good news is that people will still be able to bring their clothing and shoes and other types of items that they bring to Goodwill to, to them. One thing to keep in mind is, I think when it comes, not so much to the clothing, which could, some of it does get, as we know from Simple Recycling, will get turned into rags if it's not resalable. When it comes to other items, if you wouldn't give it to your neighbor, don't give it to Goodwill, or Simple for that matter, but the problem is neither Simple nor Goodwill repairs things. They don't fix things that are broken. So if it's broken or missing a wheel or whatever-
Throw it out.
-they're, they're not, they're not gonna fix it, and it's gonna get thrown out by, it would have been thrown out by Simple, it would be thrown out by Goodwill as well. So, that is pretty much where we stand, and like I say, Simple has agreed at my urging to leave the drop box at High Plains and continue to pay us, it'll be a lot- and continue to pay us. It'll be a lot smaller amount, but it'll still be.
The thing's always full, though.
Huh?
You go by there, it's always, it's always full.
It is. We've, since we moved it to a more prominent location, it's gotten much, much better activity and, you know, so I would, you know, urge people, if they've got the, the old clothes and shoes, put it there. It helps the town. Everything else, go to Goodwill as soon as they put the new one up. And that's pretty much it. Jim, I'm not sure exactly what the vote on, but, but, you know, if we have to vote.
I don't know.
To break the, break the contract with Goodwill, with Simple, based on their.
I think we agree to accept Simple's terms as submitted.
Okay.
Which is this, which is, which is this item.
Vote to terminate, okay.
So you accept their letter on this one, which is a letter of separation, of termination. And then you vote to accept this one, second.
Yeah.
Uh, to go back to Goodwill. Alright, so the motion we need first is to accept the separation or termination letter from Simple Recycling.
So moved. With regret.
Two seconds there on it. Is there any discussion on that? Any more discussion?
I, I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
And I just don't remember the, the terms of that agreement with Simple Recycling, but is there any loss to the town for allowing the termination to occur? That would be the first question. No? If not, then no further questions.
Yeah, no, they're, they're actually working, you know, they gave Mitch this leeway to talk to Richie Borer and put something else in place. There's going to be some other things that need to be done because I was there today and probably everybody in this room goes to the dump at some point or another.
Yeah.
And you pull up and you back into the hopper and get rid of your stuff. How long do you think it's going to take once that blue bin is gone from in front of when you go to leave the hopper? Somebody's going to go straight ahead down the hill. So we're going to have to be putting some sort of fencing or barrier of some type up along that edge there because I can just, I can just see them calling me, Jim, we have a problem.
Hopefully not.
Somebody's on their nose. So that's the only loss is we're going to have to put something there because Goodwill's container will go kind of over there, you know, on the side, off, off, out of the way. So motion made and seconded. Discussion had. All those in favor of termination with Simple? Okay.
And then I'd like to make a motion that we accept the offer from Goodwill to place their container at the transfer station as noted. And along with what I've given you is their declaration of insurance, certificate of insurance coverage as well.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded there. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain unanimous. Mitch, while we're on this
Yeah.
great topic, is there anything more to tell about our glass recycling yet that we're working on? Would you like to?
Yeah, I guess, I wasn't, wasn't quite prepared. I have been in contact with both Jennifer Heaton-Jones with the Houston Recoveries, Recycling Recovery Authority, as well as some personnel at Oak Ridge Waste where our waste goes from, from, and our recycling goes from the transfer station and from our residents, the curbside pickups. The issue there is twofold. One is they're not quite ready to separate glass. The background to this is glass at this moment, even though it is a mandatory recyclable item, it has got very little to zero value. And it's also heavy. And so since we pay per the ton, you know, it's, it's much better than throwing it away, but it's still costing us. And if we can separate it, there's, there's a market for glass that's separated. The market is basically to use the glass with concrete and, and as an aggregate with the concrete. But we don't have it all worked out yet. Their pilot program probably won't kick off until next spring. And even then, I've had discussion with Bob Britton, the Public Works Director. If we were to get a separate container for glass at the transfer station, it means that, as the way I explain it to them is, unlike other, there are some towns, the only place you recycle is the transfer station. I believe Woodbridge may be one of them, and Bethany another.
Yeah.
They don't have the curbside pickup. So all the recyclables go through one, one route. With us, I said, listen, we have no intention, at least as far as I know, of ending our curbside and have everybody go to the transfer station. So the only, the only glass separation that would take place would be at the transfer station. But the other problem we have is, in speaking to Public Works Director Britton, he and I separately went up to the transfer station to look for a location for that. And we could not find a suitable one for the size of the container that's necessary. Doesn't mean we can't do it, but right now it's, it's in that kind of a flux. And I'm continuing discussion with, with both Bob and, and Oak Ridge to see if we can do something about that to help us, to help our costs, to recycle cleaner materials. But we're still, I'd say at least six months away, if, if, if at all.
Alright.
But thanks for inquiring, Jim. You know I'm working on that.
No, I put it up. I put you, put you up to it.
Yep, you did.
And I, we have discussed it, so.
And our committee has discussed it as well. We had a presentation for, several months ago on Zoom from Jennifer Heaton-Jones, which, which if we do this, we'll have to re-get out there for everyone, but it's, it's very interesting. It's optimistic, but it may not work for us. I'm not sure. We'll keep working on it.
Depends, because we don't have a spot for that type of container. It would be separate from the other recycling containers is the problem.
Right.
So that's our challenge. However, it is good. Cardboard and aluminum are up, and even plastic, they're bailing again. And there are some overseas countries that are recycling this, so there is a market has started to establish again for cardboard. Cardboard's up to between 175 and 225 a ton. For a while there, it was circulating back down around 50, 60 a ton. So these are things that we kind of monitor quite a bit. So, thank you. To consider an act on holding a public hearing during the Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled for September 8th at 7:00 PM, to be held at the Town Hall Lower Meeting Room, 617 Orange Center Road, on the adoption of a resolution establishing an ordinance prohibiting the smoking of tobacco products and the smoking and consumption of cannabis products on all property owned by or under the control of the town of Orange, and the smoking of cannabis products in the outdoor sections of restaurants within the town. I think we have a tobacco rule that goes back to Bob Souza, as I remember. But we don't have a cannabis one in the state with their passing of the legalization. It's left up to each town to take action. I think Milford has already taken action on it, as a matter of fact. But we have to have a public hearing on it at our, you know, selectmen's meeting and all. So all item two is tonight is to take a vote to send it to public hearing at our next month's meeting.
So moved. Jim, just before you vote, I just, this ordinance does exactly what you, the Senate Bill 1201 allows you to do. So if you're looking at it saying, what about this or what about that?
Sorry. This, this ordinance does exactly what the Senate Bill 1201 allows the legislative body of a municipality to do. It doesn't do any more and it doesn't do any less. So if you're looking at it wondering, you know, can we do X, can we do Y? The answer is you can do what the ordinance proposes and that's it. The zoning commission can do other things, but this is all the legislative body can do.
They have, the zoning commission has a separate task.
Correct.
To deal with, separate from what we're dealing with. We've already had our first request for cannabis store.
Dispenser.
I guess I'll call it, on the Post Road. And so zoning, I spoke with Jack about this. I think he emailed you. Zoning is also going to take a look at it. They have to decide what they're going to establish with it also. But that's separate from what we're doing. However, people will ask it, I'm sure.
Two, two questions. And the second, I was going to start with the second one first, which, which dovetails what you just said, Jim. I thought, and I may be wrong, that it was the legislative body that was going to decide. It, it seemed peculiar to me, but it was legislative body was going to decide whether dispense, cannabis dispensaries could be, could be opened in a town. But you're saying that's the zoning board?
I was under the impression that zoning handles what I'll call the retailing of it.
Okay.
And the selectmen handle the outdoor consumption of it.
And so will they also have a public hearing to adopt an ordinance of some sort?
Absolutely certain.
Yeah, I, I sent a draft, depending upon what they want to do.
Right.
But I sent a, this is the other issue, is, it's interesting, as a lawyer, ethically, we cannot assist a client to engage in illegal activity. It is illegal to consume cannabis under federal law. So the only regulation that I ethically can assist with is one that prohibits its consumption. That's just an ethical quandary. So.
But if the zoning board takes no action.
Then it gets treated like any other retail establishment. So.
And that may be the answer.
Or they could adopt what I sent them, which was a prohibition in all districts.
Okay.
Yeah. They haven't even, I know Jack has reached out to the chairman to have some initial, initial discussion. I believe, it may be on their agenda for next week. For some sort of start of discussion. I know he was talking to the chairman about it.
Go back to my.
So ours is to, for a motion to move this to public hearing for next month.
So another, another question, Jim, before we move the motion is, I would say, and it's difficult because we're saying it's going to be held here. I don't know, or honestly don't know, if this is going to generate enough interest to move this meeting to another location or not. So is there a way that we can?
Well, there's two issues there. Is, one is the law, the, the Senate Bill 1201 does not permit this proposed ordinance to become effective until, I think it's October 15th.
Okay.
So if you were to get an infusion of people next month, you could delay the public hearing to October and hold it at High Plains.
Or can we just move our meeting if, if, Jim, if, if Jim gets. You know, look, after media gets out, there may be, we may be seeing, nobody cares because they feel we're going to do whatever we're going to do. Or people may say they feel very strongly one way or the other. And instead of having a packed room, especially with everyone possibly still wearing masks, you know, is it better for us to try and hold something at High Plains? That's my only concern. And then, you know, then we go to High Plains, there's six people there and we've.
Could be an unknown.
Yeah. So I'm just asking because we don't know, is, do we have the ability to change the meeting location like a couple of days beforehand without, and put a sign on the Town Hall?
You could because
We still hold the same time.
As long as it's posted, you know, that 24-hour legality, et cetera, et cetera, you could move it.
Okay.
But it is kind of an unknown.
It is, absolutely.
You don't know how many will show up.
Yeah.
Or not.
Technically, you have to hold the public hearing wherever it's been published to be held.
Oh.
So.
I would just have it at High Plains, yeah.
You can't, you can't hang it. You could, but there, the courts have over invalidated actions.
Why don't we schedule it to have it at the cafeteria at High Plains instead of the gym?
Sure.
I think the cafeteria is easier.
And I think that probably suffice.
And then we'll do it that way. So withstand corrected of what I read, it will be at 525 Orange Center Road, the Community Center Cafeteria at 7:00 PM on September 8th.
So we had a motion, a second, I, I raised, I said, motion to approve, but I'll, it hasn't ended.
Okay.
Can you do a second?
Second open for Margaret. Okay, so there will be a public hearing held on September 8th at High Plains Community Center in the cafeteria at 7:00 PM regarding the consumption of cannabis on town properties. Is it what it will be? All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay.
Jim, real quickly, just, it is the smoking on town properties and the outside sections of restaurants.
And outside dining, yeah.
Right.
You're right. Okay. Okay. Item number three is to, let me move this one over here. This one is, item number three is to consider an act of the waiver of medical benefits. You have 24 town employees currently that do not take the town health insurance, whether they're covered by somebody else or they have their own plan or something like that. So there are 24 people there that choose not to take our insurance.
So moved, second.
And you'll see a little variation in a couple of them because of when they came on board. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number four, which they've anxiously been waiting for over there, to consider an act on proposal to install fence at Fred Wolf Park, Tom Pizzano, Orange Soccer Association.
Tom Pizzano, 523 Fairway Road, co-president with Bill Hoffman, Orange Soccer. Mitch would be glad to know, we put like 500 T-shirts in the recycling textile bin. It was five years or 10-year-old T-shirts. At any rate, we, we hope you guys can help us out here. We're here to talk about a fence, safety fence that is now required due to some excavation that was done in Fred Wolf Park. But I'm really not sure if this committee is the right committee because what I've seen before, it's, it would seem that this would be a park and rec issue, their consideration and, and what they do in the, at those parks. But when I was referred to them, they referred me to this, this body. My concern with that is that recently, you know, I, I, again, I don't know whether I'm in the right body because very recently I watched the April 21st Finance Board meeting and the Finance Director needed a scoreboard for Brenly, and he simply asked for it. And he got a, rather than repair it, he got approval for a $16,000 scoreboard.
But he, he was the representative.
For the park and rec.
On it for them, yeah. He was.
A little suspicious with that, but I know his nephew played. But my point was, we have a safety issue here. And, and I would love it to be giving it the right response and the right honor. We didn't create this problem and now we got a $12,000 fence that we need to, to install. If we do not, we can choose not to do this. You know, and, and we have options. You can close the road during, during these clinics. We can move the road. That would be my best option, if that is at all possible in this world. But right now, we have, that field is assigned and, and we, we have all the rest of the fields assigned on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a good deal of travel teams. I can't just move them someplace else. We can't just come to Mariel Tracy. There's baseball going on. It's all in, in harmony. That particular site has our smallest kids. Most of them are six-year-olds, seven-year-old boys and girls. And there's probably 100 at a time right next to this road that was, was now cleared. There's some stones that were moved as well as the stones by the playground. I understand why they were done. I understand all that. And right now, we have the problem of not being able to use that field. We can call off clinics. It's a, it's a free clinic that Orange Soccer pays the coach $4,000, I don't mind telling you. And he does a great job. And it's, it's a lot of turnout. The parents are there. The parents do watch him. But all of you were sent the video that was not staged by me, and the parents are emailing left and right. I'm not taking my child to that clinic. And, go ahead, Mitch.
I'm sorry, can I, point of order for, for the first electman or the town attorney? So before Tom goes further with this, are we the body to, to decide whether to install a fence at Fred Wolf Park or is it the Park and Rec Commission? Because if it's Park and Rec Commission, I don't want to waste his time or ours. If it's us, then fine. I just want to make sure he's raised the question.
Park and Rec was supposed to have a meeting week ago or two weeks ago. And they did not have quorum. So their meeting was.
We had a good reason. Our, our, one of our Park and Rec members was in Tokyo doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
That's true. One was there. There was a new one, point, reappointed, took Joe Lembo's spot. There were a couple other absences for whatever they may have been. So Park and Rec will act on this, I presume, at their next meeting. What I did was I took Tom's aerial that he sent to us that you have and drew in so that you would understand better what he's talking about. But I think that it's Park and Rec that's ultimately going to make the decision on this. It's, Park and Rec oversees certain things and the grounds, the athletic grounds and all falls onto them. Little League and, you know, those sort of things. That's why they went to him for that scoreboard at Babe Ruth.
And so my question then is, don't get me wrong, I, I can stay here all night and listen to Tom. But I mean, is this, is this appropriate for us to be here discussing this for the next?
Park and Rec should make the decision.
Okay. So it sounds to me like we should either table this or, or not act on it because it's in the wrong place. I, I just, I don't want to waste everybody's time, especially Tom's. And he's put a lot of time into this. But if it's not, if we're not the right body, if we're going to say yes or no, and the answer really belongs to Park and Rec, and what we say tonight doesn't really matter then, does it? So. So...
Oh, it depends on whose pocket is coming out of it.
Well, I think everything always matters.
All right. Is he leaning for, but he's not leaning for opinion, he's looking...
The situation is, well, let's explain it a little bit, so that, while we're here, because Tom has one concern, and I have another. And, when they took out that stone wall and brushed there that, you know, he referred to, that was done on the advice of the person installing the more grass and improvements down there at that time, with the intent of giving Tom more room. It was done, it was, I'll say, it was on Rick Capsulatro's thought, is how that happened. Then Tom came and blew a gasket, because he felt it wasn't appropriate, and put up a, or had Park and Rec put up a temporary fence, at, kind of at the line where the stone wall kind of had been.
Right.
In the meantime, the other part, which you'll see on Tom's aerial there, it has grown in and all, it was just treated, it doesn't look its most beautiful this week, because it was just treated and all, and, which was the next step we're waiting for, for that. Then the next thing that's supposed to be happening there, is there would be a four-foot chain link fence that would continue from Tom's telephone poles, down and around, and then towards La Crosse, so that that would all be fenced over there. Send those to the... You can have mine, because I don't, I know what it is. And so, that would be fenced, but we had to wait, it would be done, planted, the irrigation's in, et cetera, et cetera. Then that chain link fence will be eight to 10 feet off of the roadway that goes back to La Crosse, on both sides, and there'll be fence on both sides, and appropriate gates and whatnot to get the, you know, lawn mowers in and out, and that sort of thing, and pass-throughs for people attending the site there. So that's the intent of the next step. The grounds were just treated to eliminate a lot of the broadleafs and stuff, Rick Capsulatro just did that this week. And the next step is fence and some plantings along the edge of that, and that's what we've been waiting on, quite honestly. His field runs parallel with the road that goes out to La Crosse. It doesn't run at that road, it runs parallel with that road. And now there's probably, I don't know, Tom, 80 feet, 60 to 80 feet of excess now?
Yes.
Probably 60 to 80 feet, so...
I think 30, but...
Well, I think it's, I don't know, it's a good distance from the edge there. And, if you put up a fence where the temporary fence currently is, which is approximately the edge of their playing field, you're then going to have a strip of land between that fence and La Crosse, I'll call it La Crosse Road. So then, what do you do with that? I think Rick's intent, and I don't know exactly, because I don't know about measuring out soccer fields, was to either turn or shift over, I don't know. But I mean, it has, it's got irrigation and everything in it. And that was all done on the advice of people that grow grass smarter than I. So, that's why that turned out like that.
The concern I had was kind of immediate, and I have no problem working with Park and Rec, providing they get the okay, because they basically were told not to deal with this, but is my current thought, we're going to start soccer in September, and I either tell them no Tuesday, Thursday clinics, or we put something up to protect the kids. And, and I have no problem, I will stand there and stop all cars during clinic. I don't think the La Crosse people are going to buy that, and I don't know why they don't show up. I emailed both, both of the people in Park and Rec and the director of La Crosse, but they should be very concerned about this. I'm concerned, I stand there and was talking to somebody and almost got hit by a car myself. But, believe me, if you gotta, if you, you have to see this to believe it, and I know some of you may not even care, stop there on a Tuesday or Thursday in September, come join us.
Tom, can you, I've got to interrupt you, and I apologize, but...
No problem.
Respectfully, do you think anybody that's sitting here is not concerned?
Well, I was told.
I mean, do you honestly feel that this board of representatives is not concerned about the well-being of the children in this town?
I know you are.
Kind of take offense to that.
Okay, I know you are, so let's, let's act on it, let's solve the problem. $12,000 fence, we got a, we got a fence in there, we can use the land as we have it, and, and we got 300 kids that will enjoy it.
Well, it sounds as if there is something in place. I understand your concern of immediacy, you've been told that it's the Park and Rec, we can't circumvent what the Park and Rec does.
Yeah, but Park and Rec was told not to do this, so, I need that clarification.
Well, I can't...
If we're going to get, if you guys, if Park and Rec approves it, would this board approve it?
I don't know.
Would approve what?
The $12,000 to put a fence in.
I would not approve, I personally will not approve a 10,000 or 10-foot high fence. A 10-foot fence for you is the same fence that's at the tennis courts. You don't need a 10-foot high fence.
Well, in the video I showed you, a kid kicked over a ball over four or five foot...
Tom, a ball can go over a fence.
Yeah.
It's, the, the ball could, is a ball. The child is the child. I mean, there will be a fence there, and we're following a process that was laid out.
Just so happened, it just so happened to be that on the April 21st meeting where the scoreboard was approved for, rather than repaired, also the notice was that there's been a lot of traffic at Old Tavern Road. Jill Pepe's here, she can talk about her experience, but for those of you that didn't watch it, you might want to know that an elderly person drove their car into the lake, it had to be towed out and everything. That same elderly person could be looking for their grandchild, and could drive right into one of these fields. If you want to take a look at the guardrails at Fred Wolf Park, three guardrails had been hit and broke. I mean, it's been a few years, we need to repair them, but yes, the protection needs to be there. Ballard's something, we can't have 500 cars bypassing that, that plot of land and expect the kids to play on it. And, and that's why, John...
That, that's why I feel so, you know, you know, desperate about this.
And again, Tom, I respect your opinion.
Thank you.
But, as a board of selectmen, as a former judge approbate for 12 years, who's done nothing more, and as a private practicing attorney, for goodness sake, and a resident of this town, who has two boys, who play over there, I, I'm offended that you would think that we don't care. Now, you didn't exactly say that, but in my opinion, you're applying it, and I take offense to it, so I'm sorry.
No, it's just that I become responsible for those children if we organize them there, so...
Well, I appreciate that.
And that's a concern that I take seriously.
So do I.
Yeah.
Jim, when does the playground go in?
Well, they got a ways to go. They got a ways to go, yet they're, they're...
So we don't have a distraction right now?
No, and there's going to be some other improvements there that will be separate. There's going to be a timber fence, I call it a timber fence, the heavy, kind of like out here in the parking lot. There's going to be that along the edge of that existing parking lot where the stone wall was, and then, a separation and a chain link fence within that, that goes around the actual playground. So you're going to have a timber fence with those large posts that they put in, and beyond that, chain link fence around the actual playground itself. So there is double protection there too, and that will wrap around onto that Oak View Road, whatever you want to call it, Oak View exit.
And will that fencing be put in prior to the playground being constructed?
Well, the chain link won't be, because that will go in after the playground is built.
Okay.
Because you're going to have machinery and grading and all that.
Right.
The timber fence will be.
Okay.
Yes.
And you're saying that the playground is not going in the next month or two?
No.
All right. And your clinic is when?
Tuesdays and Thursdays, September and October, November.
September and October, so...
So you need the chain link fence from where Tom's telephone poles on the ground stop, up through the new area and around to La Crosse, up La Crosse Road, I'll call it.
Okay.
Towards the backfield.
And that's important to have in before the clinics start?
We've been dealing with both Orange Fence and Reliable Fence, because both of them have been having challenges with supply and labor, and a lot of things, but Devin Iainon is, actually, he just did a bunch of pricing and stuff for the Conservation Commission, right, because of Creos Group, Orange Fence was down at Old Tavern, doing some other work for Little League down there, I believe, so... Mr. Rone, you have to come up here, though.
I'm just trying to...
Oh, come on!
Well, while Jim's coming up...
It's a nonsense question.
Ask it then, ask.
If you're putting a chain link fence by the playground, and it's a, what's the height of that fence?
I believe on the parking lot side, it's going to be five foot, the same as out here at the, right here behind Mariel Tracy.
For aesthetics and for safety, is it possible that we could make a fence that, and I'm really here just as an observer, but, to make a fence that's consistently...
It's going to be the same, it's going to be the same fence.
So maybe a six-foot high fence, so a little kid couldn't crawl over the fence to go get their ball, but it's also so they couldn't crawl out from the playground and get hit by a car, so it protects the safety of all the children in that facility, and it's still not, I think it's easily scalable.
Look at the five foot out back here, when you go out, and you'll see, I think that is probably adequate if you want to balance A and B. That's fine, it doesn't matter, that would work.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, that's good, that's good. Welcome back. Mitchell?
So, I'm trying to understand the differences in proposals. Jim, I think I understand yours with the black lines here, that you're saying is, looking at this...
There's a mark on there, Tom's, you can kind of see a shadow, it's over here.
Well, I'm, yeah, so the shadow, so that, I know, that, the shadow that's on the bottom here, that's where the current...
That's a temporary fence, right.
And your proposal, Tom, is to replace that fence...
It could be put anywhere.
In the same area.
I mean, Jim's got a good idea, you could relocate it anywhere.
Right. I just want to make sure I'm...
Five-foot peripheral perimeter fence work?
It's got to be higher, it's got to be higher, these kids...
Well, it's not going to stop the ball.
Well...
But it will stop the kid.
And behind here, I thought we went to about eight or 10 feet.
No, it's five. It's five or six, six of the both.
We raised it...
Because I actually remember, that, that used to be a four-foot fence.
Right.
Yeah.
And there was concern from some parents about the lifting of children up and over the fence.
We had a divorced couple is what drove it, and custody, that's why we raised it up.
And that's what drove that being raised up. I think whatever that fence size is, whether it's five or six, is actually adequate. But the question is, Tom, I mean, I think what Jim is saying is, instead of putting a fence where the current fence is, if you bring it closer to the road, first of all, the ball's going to have to go that much further to get that far.
I gave him a copy of it, he had it.
Yeah, no problem.
And the second thing is, I think Jim's proposing the town pay for it instead of soccer, am I mistaken in that?
Well, I'll send them the bill gladly if he wants it.
I mean, you know...
No, it's part of this, part of this project.
So my point is, is that if we get an adequate fence on, on the perimeter, at least on that field, that, I think it does two things, I think. One is, it resolves the issue of not having no fence, and provides some protection, as well as, and, and takes money out, keeps money in your pocket, so to speak, and, does that, does that, does that then make this field then, with this area playable as a small soccer field going the...
Sure, it's just continuous, it's not quite level, it's...
If you put a fence in the middle of it, you can't, if you put a fence in the middle of it, you can't use it as a soccer field.
Yeah, you wouldn't use that.
You put a fence on the side of the perimeter, it can then be used as a legal.
They, they were going to blend it to the existing field, but then, and I wasn't there for that one.
I was there.
Tom was there, but Tempers got involved, and it got a little challenging, and so it wasn't graded one into the other because of disagreement between Mr. Pizzano...
Their contract, their contract was their contract, it didn't include any additional work.
Yeah, but they were going to do it anyhow.
But it could get done. I mean, it's not to say it couldn't get done.
What's that?
I'm saying it could be done.
Yeah, it's continuous sprinklered all the way down, so, yeah, there's nothing wrong with putting the fence anywhere, not too close to a road, because not much room on...
It's going to be eight to 10 feet away, because I want to put trees on the outside of it.
It would work.
Thank you.
And, you know, any fence would probably work, we may need to put a net on top of it.
If you, if you, I mean...
Well, that will...
We'll see if there's even a need.
If the ball goes, the ball goes. As long as the child doesn't go, that's the, that's the target.
But you have, you know, you have a lot of traffic there, and it's, it's only going to get a lot worse.
And they're going to be excavating for the next, what you can see, that light strip, actually, it starts at your original parking lot, and then goes, whatever direction you want to call it, that light strip, that was the first 300 feet of road we built from Millings and reclaimed from roads we did this summer over on the west, in West Orange. The next 300 feet is going to be excav, being excavated, probably, maybe next week, because we're going to be...
Rolling Ridge?
Milling and reclaiming, as a public information, if you go to Holy Infant Church. Rolling Ridge Road, North and South, Wellington Drive are getting milled and reclaimed, so we're going to excavate the next 300 feet here and use that for base, for the next 300 feet. Just so everybody's aware of what's going on there also. Yeah. So, this field here, just so everybody knows, currently, this is 290 feet from this road here, back to these trees, so, pretty, almost 300 feet, pretty significant piece.
Be a little careful with your playground design, I was concerned about handicap parking. If you were at, going down Milford, and you go to the playground that they have there, Eisenhower, but they have about five or six handicap parking, and it must be right next to the playground, and the playground there, therefore, has to have a ramp up to get there. I did see that, and it took some, some yardage to do that, and I was concerned that, you know, you may not only, may have about an acre here for this playground, maybe an acre or two, depends on the size of your pickleball courts.
They're taking, actually, they're taking, it's for this, don't ask me how I have all these numbers in my head, ladies and gentlemen, this side wall right here, this stone wall right there, that's 495 feet, and the playground is using about 250 feet, and then there's a parking thumb in between that, and then the pickleball courts that are going beyond that are 60 by 120, and there'll be actually some more, there'll be room for some parking at the head of them also, so there should be adequate parking there for the bulk of it, and down at Milford Playground there, right on Grassy Hill Road, North Street, they have a bunch of parking right there by that playground and all, and then, for overflow parking, you have to go across the driveway, which actually, I was kind of surprised myself, and they put more parking on the other side, but the cars zip in right off of North Street there pretty quick, but, so there's going to be parking right up to it, and then there's going to be, you know, they can park out in the other parking lot if they really choose to. I think with time, there'll be more parking in there, because there's more land there. We agreed when we did this to leave, there's about, the boundary line comes up and goes to about here, of 25 feet behind the houses on Oak View. Currently, that's about 100 to 120 feet of buffer behind them, just so, you know, you know for measurement. So there's still plenty of room there on that side for it, you know?
And then these, this area here, Jim, is for future soccer fields?
It's grass, it's future grass is all I'm going to say.
It's grass, okay.
I mean, Tom and I will have to come to terms on another day over that, quite honestly, because, and he already knows it, there's, no, it's not, if you, if you look at that as three fields this way, they're not bad, because it's 290 feet deep, you only use 150 feet. So there's, there's leeway. That could all, it, it doesn't slope when you divide it into different parcels.
Yeah, I was telling the, the playground committee, though, they got their dream, because you can use that as slip and slide, because now we have sprinklers.
Yeah, well, maybe they will, but the Hispanic soccer team from New Haven's interested in it, so we can lease it to them.
That's a good idea.
But this probably will end up being Tom's at some point in the future, because you have a bigger problem at Mariel Tracy with no parking.
Yeah, that, that's why the...
And so eventually, you got to solve that problem, so you can't solve problem A until you fix problem B.
So hopefully, hopefully in the future, we can talk about that, it's probably not So hopefully, hopefully in the future, we can talk about that. It's probably not the right time. But with 15 acres being open now at Fred Wolf Park to come in through Peck and, and Hemlock, that, that's, that's really the ideal way to take Mary L Tracy, including the parking and including the playground, and put it all on that 15 acres. That's 990 by 660.
Mary L, oh, you mean move your other fields over there?
Move the baseball field, move the playground. That's an excellent spot. The opening would be to both their siblings that play soccer, lacrosse, baseball, Mary L Tracy Sunday Soccer. All would be in one spot. They'd be walking into a playground. And even the neighbor who had a pool party with hundreds of kids would love to see a playground right next door for the, her entertainment. So I think it's a win-win situation. And if we're forced to move a program of 300 kids, we might want to move it into land that we already own. And, and we got 15 acres of it. And the only reason we didn't come in that way, I'll reiterate that once more, is because there were crops in the field when we designed that field. And we came in hollow road. Hollow road was a temporary road. I've got the documents. I can spend an hour, but another day I will be back. Appreciate your consideration on any fence.
So where does that leave us with the fence?
Well, it sounds like he's in, he's, it sounds like you're in somewhat acceptance of what's drawn.
A fence as soon as we can get it, which is a problem, by the way.
Well, I had to wait for them to do their next steps, which were just done this week. So are you somewhat in acceptance of it or not in?
Yeah, let's see what they propose, you know. It, it's gotta be strong enough fence, too. I mean, what was proposed, obviously, was a.
It's gonna be, I would presume, a playground grade. I want, you know, black vinyl chain link fence. So that, I presume it's heavy. I mean, it wouldn't be as heavy as 10 foot tall because 10 foot tall, you have to use heavier pipes and all that, which we all understand. Okay, well, hopefully they'll have a meeting, but this is gonna happen actually sooner than later because it's part of this whole process as it goes. We're trying to get a price on that timber fence. They're telling me 12 to 16 weeks to get that timber fence.
I, I just don't want to go the same route we did at Old Tavern. For those of you, all of you kids, all your kids played, my kids played, Old Tavern Road was catch as we can, do it here, do it there. And we are just lucky, knock on wood. We had one car in a ditch. We didn't hit, hit anybody. We haven't taken off anyone's door.
Right in the pond though.
Joe Pepe was here because she called me on an unrelated issue and said, I can't even drive through there now because of all the cross traffic that's happening.
Yeah, they have a little, they kind of overgrew what they had. And when they, when they built that last field, that's actually commemorated to Dr. Goldberg there, that really should have stayed parking up there.
And I helped them with the committee, me, Steve Vesputte, and others who are on the Park and Rec Committee. We did put that play, Ralph, I think you were there, too. We put that parking lot behind the police station so that the, you know, a lot of traffic does go there. So we're halving the traffic, but we could not overcome, get the parking to the Roach Field.
And actually Vincent and I got them parking behind, well, it was Bear and Grill at the time. It's had three or four different restaurants in it now. But we made an agreement with that property owner there for parking behind that restaurant there. I don't even know what's in there now.
Hook and reel.
Is that hook and reel? And I just saw there's some doctor's office or something going in the back part of it now.
They had a cup of Dunkin' Donuts coffee back there yesterday.
There you go. All right, Tom.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Very productive. Thank you.
Is this gonna be a one way, one way driveway?
No.
Can I just?
Yes.
See, I'm here for him and I, I'll do one.
Jill, come on up.
That's it, that's it. Sorry.
That's all right.
Jill Pepe, 344 Long Meadow Road, Orange. I was on the soccer board for years and years when my kids played and saw the work that Tom, Rick Cap, and everybody put into it. And I'm still good friends with all those people. And I feel like I should be speaking for Orange Little League also. Just coincidentally, I called Tom on another thing, and when he mentioned what was going on, I said, I just took my grandson, who was seven, and there, they moved to Guilford. I'm sorry about that. But anyway, I said, I gotta take you to the Little League field in town to show you where your daddy played. When my son played, I think there were four fields. So I go in, this is about six, eight weeks ago. I go in, I was totally overwhelmed. I'm impressed that they have so many fields. I was a nervous wreck driving through because he kept saying, Grandma, look at this. What's that? What about the stand? You said we could buy something. I had to drive five miles an hour and I couldn't take my eyes off the road because there were kids literally on top of the road. So my plea is not just for, for Tom and for soccer, but for Orange Little League. You guys got to think about this. And I'm the grandparent that God knows could drive, drive off someplace. But seriously, five miles an hour, everybody was on the road. It was a little bit frightening to me compared to what it was.
It's very hectic down there.
It was. I was in shock.
When everything is going.
And I was there when everything was going. I had no idea. So I'm just.
I was there opening day and it was a little nerve wracking.
Crazy. That's what I felt, nerve wracking driving through. That's exactly what I felt. So my plea is for both fields, for everybody, think of the safety of the kids. And I appreciate that you guys all are in agreement with that, but think about that and just plan it and go for it. Thank you.
Very good. Good to see you. Bye-bye. Okay. Sure, Peggy, come on up.
Hi, Peggy Pizzano, 523 Fairway Road. I'm just a little bit confused by decision making. So is the park being decided here or through Park and Rec? You know, who, because of lack of quorums cannot meet, where are decisions about Fred Wolf Park made?
Two things, two directions. Because a lot of the funding for this has to be approved by this board because it's state and our federal funds that require the legislative body to take action on the funds.
Right.
So that's approved here. The general programs and operation and that sort of thing, Park and Rec handles. Like originally, when this started, I had to go to Park and Rec and pitch it to Park and Rec and tell them, you know, this is what we're going with. And they were, that was in 19, believe it or not. That was July of 19, I think it was, that that started. And then '20 didn't happen because of.
Covid.
Covid. And now things are moving. So they need to take action on some things. So I need to find out, and I will, who told them not to go there to come here. That's interesting to me, but I need to, I don't know who told them that because it wasn't me. And that's how, so it's kind of jointly.
So Jim, if I can follow Peggy's question then, do we need to approve up to a certain amount so this fence can get installed, at least the one?
No, because we don't have the estimate yet because I had to wait for them to treat everything and do that part.
So it'll come back to us at some point?
That will because it'll be LoCIP funds, Local Capital Improvement Project Funds.
And so if it comes back to us at our September meeting, will we get it installed in time for what Tom wants to have done, needs to have done?
If we can get it, if they can get the product, yes.
I'm, I'm dealing with a fence issue in North Branford. It's taken eight months to get the fence.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, but that was a little bit different issue. I know the players out there, that was a little bit different.
Jim, let me say on behalf of myself, if we need to have a special short meeting, if you get the quotes, you know, we can move it up, I'd be willing to meet.
Yeah, it's gonna move. I've been waiting for them to do this. I was told they weren't gonna do what was just done until September. So it was done in August, so that's my next step.
It's just, as an observer, it's really, I'm hearing you talk about, you know, the other things that you have planned, but I've never seen, like I don't know what the plans are for the park. I would love if this body could put it out to the public so there's an understanding of what's planned and that it's logical and, you know, all the different groups. I think the community would love to see what's planned at that beautiful property. So I don't know if that's in the works or could be done.
There's a lot, there's a lot of requests for things, but most of them are not. One of the next things I would like to see, if you want to ask me, is another walk track. Because any of you who go by High Plains, the amount of use of the walk track up here is unbelievable. And then we're having more dog occurrences, too, which is, sometimes dogs like to be friendly to each other and sometimes they don't. And so that's one of the things personally that I would like to see, some sort of a, not necessarily perimeter because then you're gonna be right in the people's backyards, the way this piece of land is situated. But there's enough room there that we can get a perimeter walk around some of this for a second thing. Originally, it was supposed to be that way when they planned out for where the lacrosse fields are. It was gonna be a track around the outside of that, but then due to topography and money and a lot of things that went along with that, it didn't happen. But a regular walking thing, you know, you can walk through the woods is one thing, but a stone dust path that, that's a little more sure-footed for people is something that I personally would like to see. I don't have a location for it yet, but that's on there.
As a walker, I certainly agree. So, you know, just, I understand the grant and the responsibilities and the reporting, but the actual festivities or whatever you want to call them.
Planning of it.
Well, we'll go back to Park and Rec. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, all right, thank you.
Yep, actually, because we've talked to them, I talked to Dan Lynch. Dan Lynch is supposed to talk to his board, but we found out through some of our gyrations that he maybe always isn't doing that. You know, but we've had multiple, multiple requests. I even went down to see what the heck they were talking about with this pickleball. I didn't know what pickleball was. So I went down and sat down at Milford to watch them to see, what is this that they're talking about? So then I met with the same guys who are doing the tennis courts over at High Plains, who install all these sport courts and stuff. So if I did 120 by 120, would be eight pickleball courts. 60 by 120 is four pickleball courts. And so we think, Dan and I had talked about it, we think four pickleball courts to start is a good start. That's all we can tell you. All right. That was much more amicable. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, it's, we'll let it go to Park and Rec when they, if, when they have their net. We're gonna, I'm gonna move forward with getting the pricing and all on this fence because I have to bring it to them so they understand what it is anyhow. And then if they have a quorum, they'll have a meeting. If they don't have a quorum, they're gonna have to come back here. That's simple as, as that. I mean, because there's a time is of the essence issue with it. So one way or another, we have to handle that. Okay. I can't answer that, Ralph. I don't know what they have on that board. Seven, I thought it was. I thought it was seven. Okay. To consider and act on approval of a town donation towards the Labor Day fireworks, which should have been the Fourth of July fireworks. It's a, this year, an $8,000 request, part of which comes from the community fund, part of which comes from another fund. But Mr. Sifarelli assured me that we have the money to do it. And I have to talk to Mr. Lee from Orange Little League. He's emailed me twice and he wants to know, and the, who are they, the Crushers? They, they used to raise the money to do, by doing the parking for those kids to go to Cooperstown. But they missed out because we didn't have a Fourth of July event due to the pandemic. So they still want to do the parking for this. So if everybody's good with that, it's an $8,000 request. The money is in place and.
How's this compared to what we've done in the past? It sounds like.
We did, it's a little bit more. The cost, the cost went up more. Six thousand we did, yeah. Yeah. So, and it's enjoyed by thousands, which we all know.
Awesome event. So I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
Thank you. Second, Margaret made a second. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. The money is there and it's an event for the town. All in favor? Both? Stain? Unanimous. Thank you. Uh, last item here is to consider and request to hold block party on Ridgeview Road was submitted by Nicole Fierstein. Okay, she gives you all the terms and all are on the document there. So with that said, motion, was there a second? Motion and second made. All in favor? Okay. Committee, so did you all notice, too, finally, 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 the library has been pressure washed and they started painting it? And remarkable, just pressure washing it was tremendous. So pension board, Selectman Goldblatt.
No report for this month.
Okay, emergency management. It says Selectman Goldblatt, but I know it's Selectman Novicki.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to provide a little more detail on the Covid situation in Orange.
Yes.
From what the first selectman has already said. We had zero cases in May and June. And then we've seen an uptick in cases, 17 in late July and now, as Jim said, 25. So it's a concern.
Was it 25 in August or 25 since July?
Twenty five. Twenty, no, altogether 25.
We're up to 25 cases.
We're up to 25 cases. Yeah. And New Haven County has a high transmission rate, actually the highest transmission rate in the state. High transmission means 100 or more cases per 100,000 or a positivity rate over 10% in the last seven days. There are 69 hospitalizations in New Haven County out of 219 in the state overall. And as Jim said, it's the non-vaccinated who are getting sick. The age is skewing younger. Ages 20 to 59 are the highest proportion of hospitalizations. So it's something that we need to watch very carefully. Government, Governor Lamont, instead of using his emergency powers to establish a statewide indoor mask mandate, has so far given that responsibility to municipal leaders. There has been no decision from the state with regard to masks in the school, in schools in the fall. But we are waiting for more guidance from the state. And Dr. Mohammed will be consulting with the school superintendents as time gets closer to the start of school year. Overall, we have to keep an eye on what's happening in our town over the coming weeks and months. We still need everybody in Orange to get a vaccine, vaccination, please. We have 70%, 7-0% of our residents who are fully vaccinated, and that's terrific and fantastic. But as we said, the pandemic is a pandemic of unvaccinated people, so please, 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 get a vaccination. You may have seen, if you were at the carnival on Sunday, there was a tent that was put up by the State Department of Public Health and our public health department, and it was giving vaccines, which was great. And, you know, we need to do more of those kinds of things around town and make sure that people are aware it's happening and they can get a vaccine easily. And then just lastly, we need to carefully monitor and assess the impact of big events. We have to see now two weeks, two weeks down the road after the carnival to see if we see any, any dramatic increase or whatever. We just need to keep our eyes on, on all these things as, as the months go by. Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely concerning. I mean, like I said earlier about my, my father's cousin, I mean, she's the second cousin to me, 97 years old. She had the vaccine. And yet, yeah, she was vaccinated, yet went to this wedding and ended up coming down with it. Yeah, so, and she still hadn't left her house even though she had her shot. So it's not 100%, you know, it's, like Margaret said, we're at 70% of town residents, but, yeah.
What are the statistics for the 12 and older getting vaccines in Orange?
It, that would be, everybody who's eligible for vaccination is 70%.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, but you know, age, ages, different age groups, it's different.
Well, there is no, for 12 and under right now, there still is no answer.
I just was concerned about the kids in school.
As we are.
The middle school and high school, I just wondered the percentages that were vaccinated.
Um, I don't know. We have it broken down by age. But we have it by the state report. They could probably, if you could find the right person at the state level to extract that information, you could probably could get it, but it's not given to us that way. It's given to us as a, as a bulk. It's not. You would have to get it from the state. And if you got the right person giving out the data, maybe you could, they could extract it. All they give us is what Margaret referred to, a bulk number, a bulk percentage. They don't break it down by like 70 to 90-year-olds and 50 to 70, you know, that kind, they don't have it.
I was just concerned about the opening of school.
I'm very, we're very concerned with the children 12 and under. There's no vaccine at this point. You'll find a lot of the children over 12 that are still under their parents' control. A lot of them have gotten the vaccination. But you have some parents who are not believers in the vaccination, so their children are not. I, I don't believe it's a requirement at this point in time to go to school, to be vaccinated, which is kind of interesting if you think about it because all of us here, Connor Lefty was the youngest one. All of us here, when it was our time to go to school way back when, they took you to the doctor, you got your shots, you cried, you went out, you got a lollipop, and then you got your new sneakers. I mean, it was required that you got shots. And our society has changed in. And our society has changed in requirements sometimes are pushed to the side.
Well, I'd just see, you know, with the upward mobility of all of this with people getting sick. You know, I worry about staff, I worry about students that can be vaccinated and that were not.
A very, very large percentage of all town employees, both town side and Board of Education side, I can't speak for Amity, but town of Orange side have been vaccinated. There are a few naysayers in the group, but the very high majority have been vaccinated.
But it's not mandated.
It is not mandated, yeah.
The Orange Board of Ed, like you speak for them, they do a great job of hosting if a child was positive.
Yes.
Class and quarantine for that class. I pay close attention to that because we watch the kids that play soccer the following week and make sure that that group.
They don't show up.
So they've done a wonderful job with that. I haven't watched every old cat, I watch a lot of old cats. It's a shortcoming in my life. But I, the Board of Ed, I don't think they brought that up, that they should do that again, especially with the COVID.
Right now, our Board of Ed is scrambling because many of you have seen it with the changing of house ownerships, boom, boom, boom. These houses are being sold faster than the signs can go up, putting them for sale. So people have been moving here from all other places with children. And all of a sudden, you know, last June, they kind of knew where their numbers were gonna be come September. You always get a little influx over the summer. Well, we've gotten some tremendous influx with house sales. And so right now, we have some very big classes by today's standards. And the Board of Education Superintendent and all are trying to solve these issues. I mean, there's classes right now that are gonna be 24, 26 kids. Now, when I went to High Plains School when I was little, we had 24, 25, 26 kids in a class. But nowadays, you don't have that. And so, but we are having it because we've had such an influx of sales. There you go. Yes. So that's our biggest concern right now with that. With that said, is there anything else to come before this body? If not, you see, we appointed three more people to the task force. Were they meeting tonight, Margaret?
Yes.
I thought so. Okay. So, yeah, so hopefully that group, Rob Hames and them are, Thomas, all of them are trying to work that out over there, so that's good. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor? Okay, let's not forget the fair and the fireworks. Enjoy the night.